Good evening, everyone. Do you want to say the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We all please pray with me. Heavenly Father and Creator of all things, we ask you to cast your blessings on all who have gathered here this evening. Please grant to all the wisdom and knowledge needed to provide for the residents of our beloved village. We further ask you to create an atmosphere of civility and respect among those present, so that we may all keep in mind the purpose of this meeting, which is the betterment of our community. May the abilities of both our elected representatives and those citizens who have brought petition before this body, permit them to work in harmony, so that any conflicting issues may be carried to an amicable and satisfactory solution for all concerned. We strive to be as devoted to providing for the well-being of this, our dear community of Walton, in a similar manner to the well-being which you so graciously provide for us, the residents of your kingdom on earth. Dearest Lord and giver of life, please hear our prayer, and together we say, amen.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. You have to run on the show. All right, first thing, we have a public hearing for local law, 2023-24 senior exemptions. We need a motion to open up.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. You got a retorty on it? We had gone over this a few months ago. There were some exemptions that we made for seniors, and there was some wording that had to be changed. So it's still the same thing, we're just going to change the wording around. Correct, right?
The assessor has messed up the limits.
The limits.
So the limits have changed a little bit.
If anybody has any questions about that, if not, make a motion to close. Make a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Then we need a vote to accept. Make a motion, we accept, uh, Liberty Bar?
Aye, second.
All in favor? Aye. Close. Thank you. The second thing is a public hearing for 23-24 tentative budget. Need a motion to open up?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Anything you want to read about it? Just, what is our, um, how much are we raising it? I forget, 1.2%?
The tax levy, yeah.
So I said, we're staying within all levy that we had by the state, so we'll be in 2% range. If anybody has any questions about that. We tried to keep it as best we could. Could have gone a lot higher, because everything has gone up. It's the gas, the wages, the food, everything has gone through the ceiling, but we cut back where we could, just to make it so we can go over our limit.
White knuckle budget.
Yeah. So if anyone else has anything to say, I need a motion to close.
I've moved to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. You need a motion to pass the budget.
I moved to pass the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you. Number three is a public input. Is there anyone here that has something they would like to bring up and talk about or say?
Laura, did you want to?
Yes. So.
Your name, please.
My name is Laura Fassler. And I just wanted to inquire about the fire hydrants in town, because they're all rusted. And I painted them with a group of 4-H kids, oh, probably like 12 years ago.
Yeah, I remember.
And I wanted to get a group together to maybe paint them again, but I called the fire station and they said to come to a meeting. And ask about that, because first of all, I just wondered if there's funding to at least get paint to cover the base, you know, the base coat of them. Um, you know, and money for paint to get started on. Basically, I was just.
You guys do the same thing like on Delaware Street around there, that one you're talking about, like you did before?
We try to paint as many as we can, but I have a couple 4-H groups that want to do it, and my art students, I'm the art teacher at the school. So I have a really talented crew of kids that I think would paint them very nicely.
They'll be doing it with you, as supervision?
Yes, I will supervise.
Are the schools okay with that?
Well, it wouldn't be through the school, it would be in the summer.
Oh, with the summer time, okay.
So I have contact with parents, and as, um, you know, we might create some kind of community group or that helps, you know, with other things too. So, which might be under 4-H, but we're not sure yet. But right now, I am in a 4-H group that wants to participate.
Okay.
So I just wanted to know, you know, is there funding for painting?
Probably. Got to be some money in the DPW budget for painting fire hydrants. How often do we do that?
What kind of paint are we looking for?
Well, I don't know if you thought, possibly, like if just the rust is covered.
So you're just looking for the right?
Yeah, somebody to, or we painted them white, because we knew that we were, I had to draw pictures on them for the kids, and the kids told me it was like coming out of the side. So, and the colors showed up, the fish showed up better. But I don't know if they're, you know, if fire hydrants get rusty, I don't know what the bench does. Do they come to a point where then you have to paint them anyway?
Well, one would think.
I thought I could get the colors if, but first we need to cover them.
You just want a base, the base coat.
Put a base coat on, yeah. So I'll try to fundraise to get some of the colors. If we can just get help with, you know, the base rusting, I think that's all we're raised.
Right.
So that's, that's all.
What do you guys think?
I think it sounds great. It can't cost that much money to paint some fire hydrants.
There's definitely a lot of them.
Yeah, most of them have been good. It takes a while for rust to all to dry.
I don't see any objection to having that. I think the last time they were done, everybody, they finished their own paint. I don't think we did for that.
Yeah, you didn't buy any paint.
We didn't buy any paint for it. I know you got some of them that got to be replaced, some of them don't work. And they are very expensive.
There's likely to be, you know, a number that'll be replaced by water project, um, necessarily, this section of Delaware Street, but we know some of the.
Or maybe just start on Delaware Street, right around the corner with on Delaware Street, to see how that comes out. That's what I thought to me over there. That would probably be a better.
Yeah, that's definitely. Spend all our time on that.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, that's, that's really good to know. So maybe I could find that one.
Well, Bill will be able to tell you which ones to ignore.
So your name is Bill?
Yes.
What do you want to?
No, we didn't put anything in the budget.
I don't think we're bringing, we didn't have any money in the budget, and I don't think last time we did actually pay anything for it.
I think we got.
They created sort of a contact.
From unrest, the fire department, all to go there. But I don't, I don't, I just wanted to start here, to see.
Well, what do you say? We'll give a special to do it, just see if you can get some donations from run rest, because I know Bob Viti is really good at that. He's really good. And if there is another issue coming up beside that, come back to the board and we'll discuss some more. How's that?
That sounds cool.
That you feel it's okay for them to? Yeah, I, I think, yeah. I'd make a motion to get their approval to paint the hydrant.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I got more than my paint. I'll just touch base with Bill, who I don't know if he wants to be your friend.
Yes, I mean, none of the ones on, down at the central.
None on Delaware, that'll be starting.
Yeah.
From the water project.
How can we get in touch with you? I see her every day. Oh, perfect.
Yeah, okay.
I have a school email.
Yeah. No, as long as you're connected somehow, that's good.
Okay. Thank you again.
Sounds great, thank you. You can, yeah.
I've never been to a meeting, I'm sorry, everybody. All right, thank you guys.
No, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Okay, number 40, abstracts. I'm hoping everybody got a chance to take a look at them. We need, if there's no changes or any, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry. Thank you. Delaware Engineering, Bill?
Uh, I do have a couple of asks tonight. On the INI study, we've kind of been kicking that around for the last couple of months. I know we're looking at different options and trying to stay in budgets. We do have a timeframe to get the report back to EFC. It's up next month, June 16th, is when this round of applicant reports, I should say, are due back for consideration in next year's funding. So it is something we'd like to get some direction from the village from, on how, you know, big or small we may want to go in, you know, presenting a request to the state for potential funding consideration for INI repairs. So I know, I think we've talked about kind of where we may want to look at trying to do some things, you know, out of your existing budget, you know, on a relatively small scale. And that versus a more system-wide approach, which is likely what the engineering report would.
I'd love to do the whole thing at once and get it all done, but we can't. We just don't have the funding for that. We're talking over $3 million if we want to do the whole thing.
We were talking about like the main trunk lines, right?
Yeah, it could be a starting point.
That's who you feel we would get the most bang for the buck?
The, yeah, so the trunk line, the rehab procedure that we would likely present for the trunk line is where the, they put a donut, for lack of a better term, down in the pipe, and that injects grout in given areas. So wherever you get to a joint, they can inflate that donut and see if it's leaking, which we know a number of them are. And any ones that are leaking, they inject grout in it to seal the leak.
Every four feet, right?
There's joints every four feet on that section of pipe, kind of from the big end across the sewer plant.
That would probably be the most practice, that's one we could finish probably with the money going in.
That's one that can be done probably through some O and M. You know, if we're talking 20 to $40,000 a year, we could make, you know, put a dent in that. That type of.
Do we still have that much?
Repair we can't do in some of the other sections of the pipe, because they're a different style of pipe that aren't as robust that.
Thank you.
They break with the grouting procedure. So those we look to line, which has been done in the past. Sections of the system were lined after the 96 flood. There was a FEMA project to line sections of the sewer. The technology has improved since that time. The costs obviously have as well. So that was built into the, the $3 million cost was lining portions of the system that either haven't been lined or need to be lined again. And then doing the grout repairs, which are a lot cheaper repair, but it is grouts, you know, so the lifespan of that is shorter than the lining.
But that's better than digging those out and replacing them, right?
Yeah.
Or we have to close the roadways and.
Right.
Get it down on my street. I remember it was just closed forever.
Well, the other one is too, but we don't, you know, if we start like, say Liberty Street, it'd be getting this down through this, so we don't know what we'd be getting, it'd be a lot more.
Liberty Street technically is from Platte Street down to the Stargate, I believe, until I was trying to find. There's severe, severe issues.
Oh, that's like a well spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if we looked at that stretch, which also connects to what you're talking about, and see what we can get done with money that we've got. We got about $40,000. You said we could probably do the crossings for that, right? Of course.
The sewer.
Let's go.
So the Liberty Street sections, where it is deeper, and I don't know if there was a stream bed there, 100,000, you know, whatever, a long time ago. But there's a lot of gravel there, it allows water to get, you know, in there. So we know Liberty has been an issue for a long time. I think a lot of the issue with Liberty is the pipe, but also where the laterals are coming into the pipe. And the repairs for those are a liner system, which are in the range of $5,000 apiece. So we wouldn't get a whole lot done with, you know, 30, 40,000. Versus the grouting, we may be able to do, you know, 1,000 feet of pipe with the clay pipe with the joints at every four feet. It's a little bit, yes, I'm taking a crystal ball, because until you do it, there's no leg switch, you're going to just turn the INI on. But it's kind, it is kind of a phased approach to do a little bit at a time as you can, where you can. The repairs on Liberty and doing liners are, you know, probably six-figure fixes to do a block at a time, which is built into the 3 million, you know. Versus the grouting is, you know, something that's in the tens of thousands, depending on how far you go with it, that we may be able to do through an O and M.
Is state funding the only avenue to supplement this project?
The, the, the feds, the federal government, a year and a half ago, two years, probably two, two years ago now, passed the federal, the infrastructure bill. So that was a trillion-dollar, multi-trillion-dollar huge, huge sum of money. That money is starting to trickle out. That is being largely put through the existing tracks. In New York's case, it's being administered by EFC, the same agency that is funding currently our water project. What it has done is bumped the threshold for potential grant funding on the sewer side. It was generally, it's been a 25% is the maximum grant. The influx of the federal dollars, it's bumped it up to 50% grant for projects that check a lot of boxes and have severe health hazards and things like that. This type of project doesn't necessarily check those boxes. So we'd be eligible for the higher grant, but we may not score, you know, as many points. It all depends how many other communities come, you know, they have a set pot of money, and they rank everybody's projects, and they have a set budget, and the budget goes as far, you know, into the projects that come in on a given year as that budget allows. And that's what sets the funding line for a given year.
So I see that Congressman Molinaro submitted $41 million in projects to the House Appropriations Committee. And is that outside?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Yes, that's a completely separate funding track. There's probably a formal name for it, but that's, it is, it's a, they're dedicated projects that members of Congress are able to tap generally on an annual basis.
Can we submit this entire spreadsheet to?
We can.
Congressman's office?
We can. We have to have a really good sales pitch of why it's, you know, a good project for him to support over other, other communities, you know. With all these programs, they're, they're competitive, right?
Right.
So we have to have the best, show the most need, show how it's going to have the biggest impact, it's going to affect the most people. It's going to have, you know, all those things that are going to help, you know, this project rank above somebody else that's building a whatever, they're building a building to help this segment of the community, or whatever it is. You know, in the article, there was, every project in there, I think, was something different. There weren't like 15 water lines in, you know, so.
I mentioned it to him when he was at the fire hall.
Yeah.
And I explained to him, not only about the leak, but we were reaching a critical area, like we're reaching our capacity with the permit.
Right.
And he sounded good, so maybe we can do a letter and submit the whole thing to him. I told him it was $3 million.
It's worth asking.
We can ask, yeah.
I believe there's only one town in Delaware County that submitted, I think it was Roxbury, possibly.
There, well, there was, there was one town that he, he submitted on, you know, so every community in the county could have asked him for money.
Right.
And then he's got to vet those down to how much he's allocated, you know, maybe able to tap. So if he's, you know, allocated 10 million, or whatever the number is, and 50 people came to him and said, I want INI, and I want a police car, and I want a fire truck, and I want this and that. You know, he got all their post requests, and then he weeded those down to whatever, you know, you know, they feel is the most appropriate. And then they submit those for consideration by the House as a whole, and that'll get weeded down further to be projects that, you know, meet the, meet the most goals of the folks reviewing the projects on a given year.
There aren't any further, New York City or DEC avenues that we could?
I'm trying to go through the DEP too, because I'm on the coalition, I watch the towns. I've already, I met with the commissioners of the DEP, and I mentioned that to him. And I went through the CWC's meeting, and I mentioned it. But I'm going to keep bringing it up at every meeting, and I gave CWC a copy of the, of a budget that 3 million dollar was going to cost to do. So I'm going to keep bringing it up, and, because the city was talking about doing something with the INI on their, the plants that they own. And I said, well, if they can do the plants that they own, they can help us as too, because our water goes into the big, and we have a big plant. So I'm going to keep harping on that, so I think we can get some help, but let's start with something for now. No, do you think, where, where, it's $36,000. Should we start one end or the other, or rather?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we, you know, my opinion, we'd get our, the most bang for the buck with the grouting. Some of your neighboring communities have been doing that, you know, for a number of years and seen reductions. Said it's not just going to switch it off, but if we can get a 5% reduction, a 10% reduction, and it's something that can be, you know, done, you know, each year, you build on it.
My only thought is that, yeah, if you can eliminate the leaks there, then you can move from there and try to eliminate one step at a time.
Sure.
Yeah, I've been doing that for like three, four years. We're never going to gain anything.
Well, you got to have a phase.
Definitive, we can see them well?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we still.
It's not like we're going like this with the dark board.
No, no.
Put a camera down in there.
Right.
They saw, we have a thing, the camera, I saw. Liberty Street though, we can only go by the manholes, but yeah, we really don't know about the laterals, where they're.
Well, we do know somewhat, they didn't do it the last time they were here, but we did those spot liners a few years back. That company ran down through there, showing me some serious lateral leak, bad.
And they're like, what, $5,000 apiece?
To do the liner of the lateral in that range.
So.
Or dig it up, you know, to dig it up would probably be in the same range, and then it's impacting traffic in the street, you know, and you've got to cut your roadway. And so it's, it's a several thousand dollar, you know, fix for one, and that's just, that's the lateral, not the, not the main.
So we're going to say we could fix eight of them, as opposed to getting one stretch fairly dry. I don't know. I said, we'd have to go back and check them to do it, and try to put together a bid.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a number of companies that, that's, the company that did the cleaning TV work this year, you know, that's part of there. You know, and that, but there's, that's what they do, they travel around the state and, you know, the region, and they do sewer repairs, whether it's lining or grouting, or, you know, there's a variety of different repairs. But I mean, I guess that, that's kind of half of the discussion with this. You know, that's a, you know, looking at a potential repair of, you know, doing it out of O and M budget. The INI study that the state funded is to look at, you know, what are your, what are your long-term needs? So we can say we have these long-term needs, and we have a 3 million, whatever number of cost, we know we can't afford that, but we think we could afford X. So if we're saying we think we could afford $30,000 a year, does that mean we could potentially afford $30,000 a year of debt? And then you build that into, and you know, you amortize that out, $30,000 a year of debt would be, you know, 600 or 800,000 dollars. And if that's matched to 25 or 50% by the state, now it's a one or one and a half million dollar capital project. But then you're locked into it, if you do it, then you're locked into it. Versus if you're doing 30, you know, out of your yearly budget, you know, you decide to do it this year, next year XYZ happens, and you don't, you know, you're not obligated to do it. The catchway that is, you know, the water's been creeping up, we're not under a consent order currently, but at some point in time.
If we keep going, we're going to be soon. Do you just want a direction to go with?
What's that?
Right now, you just want a direction to go?
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, nothing we're, we're doing here is committing the village to a project. What the, the purpose of the study was, was to provide seed money, to look at what your needs are, and, and use that as a basis to form an ask. So, you know, if we know we're not looking to undertake a big capital project, then we put that, you know, we have needs, we're not in a position to undertake a big capital project, so we're not going to do one right now. And that's, that closes the study out, that gets the study paid for by the state, and, you know, that's our study. If we know we, well, we're going to try to do a three-year, five-year, 10-year plan, and we're going to fund this out at O and M, then maybe we're not doing, you know, formal ask to, to, you know, do a big capital project. So, I mean, it can go, you know, any, any which way. But, you know, at some point, we have to, you know, complete the study and tell the state what we think our plan is.
Well, we don't have the money right now to go, we owe a lot of money to go into it.
Right.
We can go for 40,000 and start to do something a little bit, and next year maybe do the same thing, unless we can get more funding from Molinaro or somebody like that.
Right.
Or the DEP. Right? I mean, I don't know what you guys think. That's what I think anyway. I mean, whatever else, anybody else thinks.
That's how we kind of.
We can't take a big project right now.
Right, and we teed it up to say, you know, we could identify something, and here's what we could allocate to repair it. It's a good starting point. Right.
You all over that? We can do the 40,000 and get, at least get something done, and then see, maybe we'll get lucky. Because we're supposed to have, we're putting a meeting together in June. I talked with Jeff, the mayor from Delhi, we're going to get all the, we're going to get all the mayors from Del, all of Delaware County together in June and have a meeting. And we're going to invite our representative to Molinaro and everybody else that will come. And we're going to hit them again at that time as well.
Sure.
So there'll be a lot of places that we can do this, but just to get started with, I would suggest, if everybody else is in agreement with to do that, go for the 40,000, and tell them we can't afford.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I mean.
A big project right now.
So we have, I mean, that's, my, I guess my takeaway is, is that, you know, we're going to look to continue to do O and M, you know, repairs and rehab through O and M as the budget allows, and continue to seek additional funding.
Right.
To the, to the extent feasible, and if we get X dollars.
If we get a nice amount of funding that would make it worthwhile, then we'll go for it, like, you know, 25, 40, 30, 50% is, it's nice, but it's not enough.
Yeah, you have a long term, right.
A long term thing like that.
And this data can still be used for asking?
No, yeah, yeah, and I think, I mean, right now, we, it's a map and a spreadsheet, you know, which is helpful, but, you know, it needs to kind of have a bow wrapped around it, so to speak, you know, be, you know, with background information and all the stuff that makes it a compiled document.
At least we're doing some kind of thing, because we've done this study before, and we have not anything afterwards, and it's been 10 years, and so we, we got to do something, so. At least we're showing that we're trying the best we can. If we can get more funding, then we'll do more.
Right.
But you guys all feel good about that. No, I think that, I mean, we got this other water project. Yeah. Okay.
Good segue, Dick. Water project.
Water project, yes.
We have a water project.
You'll have to pay for that.
Yes.
Within our needs.
So we, we do have a water project, a portion of it's been funded with a grant, or will be funded with a grant. On the water side, it's a 60% grant, 40% loan. So we have the design complete for that, it's into the Health Department. The next step will be to put the bid out and see where the costs come in, and then see if the village wants to move forward with, with construction. So we would ask the board to authorize the clerk to put the notice in the paper to advertise for bids for the water project.
Make the motion to authorize a clerk to advertise for bids for water systems and building projects.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay.
So do you have like a timeframe and all that information for me to send?
Yep. Yeah, we've got the bid notice. I'll get with you on the, on the dates and, you know. We'll set up a pre-construction meeting. We'll set up a pre-construction meeting and invite contractors out and do a walk-around. Also, on, on water, Curry Well, folks may have seen the well driller was out this past month for about a day and a half. We do have an invoice for the start of their work in the amount of $21,700. That was part of their proposal to the village for the net installation. They start by installing a test well, taking soil samples every feet, every foot, and then those samples are sent to the manufacturer that produces the screen, which goes at the bottom of the well, that allows the water to come in and, and to keep the gravel out of the bottom of the well. So that screen is size-specific to our installation based on the gradations of the material in our site.
While they're doing it, can we set up like a geyser so the whole village and everyone can see it shooting up, they know we're working on?
Like a real well?
They're, they're, when they're, when they're doing the development, there is, I don't know how tall the geyser is, but.
We might get a little water feature out of this.
They could get some water feature.
Yeah.
I know, when they put, when they're drilling the well, they had the, the flag on top, you know, those, those.
I saw that, that was good, a lot of people crept through there.
I'm sure.
Until they got to the barrier.
Yeah. So that's proceeding. So right now, the.
You need a motion for the.
Yeah, to pay the invoice.
I make a motion to state, right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay. So that'll continue over the summer. It'll probably be June, June timeframe that the production now is being installed and testing and permitting to follow.
Who did we say we would pay?
Fry, Fry, Well.
Fry, Well, Fry.
Alden, Newark, which is kind of towards. The last item or request, we do have a final, actually two here. The Highway Garage contract that we had with Tweedy Construction, that work is complete for the work that was in there, scope of work. We would have requested the board declare the project substantially complete effective April 14th, 2023. That's when they came back and did their couple of punchless things.
It's all acceptable, it's done. Make a motion to repay Tweedy Construction's financial.
Without seeing it?
Just ask again.
How's that Friday?
How, were you, were you invited? Was this a board thing or was this a?
I crashed it.
Excellent.
So Dick, your motion was to declare substantially complete and pay Tweedy.
Yes, Tweedy. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I don't know if I second or voted.
You did. I, I'm in favor.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Shane?
Everybody get my report?
Yep.
Does anybody?
Both of them. One from last week and.
Yeah, I completed it today.
Yes, it said part one and part two.
I just have a couple of requests, I'd like to purchase a few things. And it's, and it's all 100% DEP cost, so.
That's good.
Oh, you're seeing this on.
The first one is to buy a, a transfer pump for our bulk chemicals. And that is from USA Blue Book at a cost of $3,381. And it's 100% DEP cost.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
The second one is to purchase a UVT meter from RailTech at a cost of $2,580 plus shipping to hopefully narrow down some of our turbidity issues over there. And this is 100% DEP cost.
Motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay.
And our final one is to buy some relays for our cabinets in the filter building from Grainger and that's $2,139.38 and that's 100% DEP cost.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay.
I like those, those are good ones.
I know what they all are.
What else from New York City by force?
That's all I have, a whole lot more.
Well, maybe if they want to contribute big bucks to the sewer project, maybe, maybe their, maybe their contention would be that they want to take it over.
That's the biggest problem, right?
I, I brought that up too.
They just contribute the regulations.
That was my first comment when I heard that.
Other than giving everybody.
I said, they only want to give money for the plant they own. Why don't they own the wall plant and then they can take care of it? No, I, I, I said, wow, I think it's.
Well, hopefully they'll forget that struggle.
But I did think of it.
Okay.
I did say.
I'm not that smart.
Yeah, you are. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Oh, the inspection went good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Can we have a report?
Yep.
Any questions, concerns, prayers?
Prayers?
Lot of prayers.
That's the mess, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thinking some mess, thinking sunshine. I have no request for tonight.
Hey, we approve it.
Nice.
Just follow, we're, we're, I know, I talked to Jody the other day. I noticed Sydney is charging $300 for water shut-off. And we're getting how much, Jody?
25.
Zero?
25 to 30.
25 to 30, they're wanting $300 to turn water back. Maybe we need to look at some of the leaks, now like if we call somebody in, we'd have to pay for how long?
Two hours.
So we have to pay personnel for two hours to turn water back on if it's off hours.
So the other night I did have a phone call, somebody was doing some plumbing in their house after we had gotten to work and they were into some issues. And I explained to them on the phone that they would have to pay, call out time and they said, yep, we'll do it. So.
We gotta go.
Maybe I have to look at the fee sheet, we'll go over and kind of mess with the schedule. You know, with the cost, the manpower and everything that goes into it, maybe we, some of the rates are a little low.
Now, do they do that for, every time you do a water shut-off or?
This is why, yes, they have changed some of their fees, I mean, they, it was $300 not to turn water.
The losses, how many properties on River Streets, I'm sure there?
A lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, we noticed it with, you know, code enforcement, there's some other rates for a little lot. And we raised those up last month.
Yeah.
But maybe we should.
Just go over and take a look at it and we'll adjust it, check around.
Because it is expensive and it's not, it's fine if it's somebody, you know, you do every day and you know where the shut-off is. If you don't know where the shut-off is, it could be a half a day out there.
Yeah, then it breaks when you're there.
Yeah, you got another problem now.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Everybody got the meeting notes this week?
Yep.
Really, the only thing I have for open session is we did get our body cameras in last week. About a month and a half ahead of, Exxon told me they would be here. So we have them, hopefully we'll be up and running by next month with them, with a new policy and procedure for them and with, you know, guys over in Colchester are gonna come over and help us hook them up, so.
That's cool.
Yeah, so looking forward to that, so that's really all I got for tonight.
The rest of it we'll talk in executive session.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Unless anybody else has questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Trustee reports. Mr. Seahan?
I have none.
Dick, you have anything?
Nothing, I'm, I'm, nothing to open.
Just to supplement that, of course, the Highway Garage, it's being completed and the work that was performed by our village staff, I think they should be commended, done a remarkable job. So just glad that's drawn to a close, so.
Awesome. And the roof worked out?
Yes.
Amen.
Nate, you have anything?
Yes, sir. I have a small army of summer employees that I need to hire. At the park, at the park and pool, we are getting ready for summer and we need to hire some people to run it.
Before, before you get to that.
Okay.
What we have in the budget and some of these hours, the, the amount of money and hours are off.
Rates.
Rate, the rates are off. Could we already put a rate, right, Jody, we had a rate that we put into the budget?
Yep.
And somehow they're different, some of them are different here.
Okay, I don't recall what they were at the budget.
Yeah, but I'm just saying we gotta, you can say who they are if you want, but I would just keep the money apart.
Okay.
Until we can double-check the, the budget, will you approve, you know what I mean?
Well, our arts and crafts, our arts and crafts supervisor is going to return this year, Jacqueline Armstrong, starting on July 3rd. And Ella Reinhardt is going to mow for us, assume, starting on June 14th. Like to hire London Gardner to be our basketball supervisor, starting on July 3rd. Like to, like to bring back Mary Frainer as our pool weekend supervisor, starting July 1st. And also Allison Clark as a substitute pool weekend supervisor, also starting July 1st, so, you know, just when, when Mary is away. Lead lifeguard, Kindred Church, starting June 1st. Or, excuse, and then, that's a typo, it should be July 1st. And then the rest, the rest of these lifeguards all starting July 1st. Colby Frainer, Robert Conklin, Aline Vestherfelt, Reese Underwood. London Gardner is also gonna lifeguard for us. And Brianna Dazio and Jordan Cody upon completion of their lifeguarding.
All of them or just?
Yes, I mean, they won't, they're, they're not all gonna work at the same time, obviously, but you need, you've gotta have some people to back up the other people. Pool will be opening for the summer season on July 1st this year. Our hours of operation will be from 1:00 PM until 7:00 PM daily. We will have adults swim from 5 to, 5 to 6:00 PM. At this point, unfortunately, due to lack of lifeguards that have water safety instruction certificates, we're probably not gonna have swimming lessons unless that changes. As of now, we only have one lifeguard with a WSI certification and that's not enough, unfortunately, to do swimming lessons. Arts and crafts and basketball are gonna start on July 3rd, that's a Monday, they will run for six weeks. And those programs are Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to noon. So we're looking forward to that, looking forward to bringing in London, this will be his first, first year as the basketball supervisor and we're very excited to have Jacqueline back. Everyone really liked her, her work there last year. At the theater, we got a classic flicks coming up.
We need a motion to hire those.
Oh, I'm, yes, please, can we, I'd like to make a motion to hire all these summer, summer employees.
Second.
You making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Thank you. Forgot the motion.
Okay.
We've got Ferris Bueller's Day Off at the theater this month for our classic flicks and that's Thursday, May 18th at 7:00. And then we also have a Coffee House concert at the theater on Sunday, May 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 upstairs in the Andrea Paternoster Room. That's a free show with B. Sommers and Barb Acker. They're gonna be playing folk, rock originals and classic country, so don't miss out. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Major report, I have nothing really new, everybody knows what businesses are waiting to come in, they're still working on them, so I don't wanna keep boring you by time, but it's any day now, so hopefully it'll be soon.
Motion to pay Mike Freeman.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we need a motion to pay Dr. Freeman, he's our health officer. And I guess he wants a year.
Motion to pay, I will move to pay Dr. Freeman.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Josh wasn't, didn't make it here, so we have his report, that's all. He said he had personnel, he couldn't make it tonight.
Yeah, he's been busy.
Yeah.
Saw the report.
Other than that, we need to go into the executive session to talk about police personnel. Thank you, everyone.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.